Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. If you wish to make public comment on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For further notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. When you come forward to speak, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. All ZBA board decisions and cases within the city limits of Shreveport are substituted appeal to District Court. All ZBA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either District Court or the Parish Administrator's Office about their procedures as related to the matter you're concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and at the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The Zoning Board of Appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the meetings? The minutes? Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry and seconded by Ms. Pearson. Okay, motion carries. So it brings us to case number BAC-17-19 Fairfield LLC.
Ryan Estes, Raylene Associates, forty-nine, thirteen Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven-eleven-eleven, here on behalf of twenty-one oh-six Fairfield LLC. They're putting in a new, or they're, it's in the historic Fairfield District, they're are opening a new law office and asking for some parking variance and a landscape variance. And may answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir.
It should be noted that last week, the MPC Board did approve the special use permit for this particular location. They restricted it to three lawyers. And your stiphs also say that at any time, because they're requesting a parking variance and landscape variances, your stipulations still retain them to, if at any time that they exceed the three lawyers, they would have to come back in and provide the necessary parking, even if you grant them a variance.
Okay. That understood? Okay. Anything from the board? Okay. Thanks, sir. Is anyone else speaking in for case number BAC-17-19? Is there anyone speaking against case number BAC-17-19? Okay, go ahead, motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Correct.
Yes, correct. Move to approve with stipulations.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Berry and seconded by Mr. Farrell. Let us vote. Mm-hmm. Next case, case number BAC-18-19, Cattle Parish School Board.
Yes, sir. Kevin Bryan, Kevin Bryan Architects, seven twelve Texas Streets, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh-one, here on behalf of Cattle Parish School Board to ask for a sign variance for a monument sign at Captain Shreve High School. I don't know if y'all have had a chance to look at these signs, but the variance is in request or related to a monument sign being added to the site near the entrance to the school. Variance needed because we've already got a pole sign on site. I believe that's the reason for the variance.
I think it's just for the size.
No, it's for the size.
The size, okay. I've got several signs going for Cattle Parish School. I apologize. I'll be back.
Looking forward to it, sir.
At least I'm not asking for a pole sign this time. And I think the staff recommended acceptance of that, if I'm not mistaken.
We did recommend approval of the variance for the monument sign.
Right, okay. Got anything from the board?
Yeah, I've got a question. So moving forward, as you know, the purpose of the UDC wants to get rid of pole signs.
Right.
Is there any plan to take the pole sign, Captain Shreve, down?
At this time, no, or at least not that I'm aware of. This is strictly a sign that has Captain Shreve's name on it, a low sort of stone and brick monument sign, something that's just more appropriate for that kind of a school, and simply a sign to signify the entry to the site.
And with the other signs you alluded to, is there any plan for, once monument signs start coming in, to be replacing the pole signs or take the pole signs down?
As of right now, the Cattle Parish School Board has a slew of signs that they would like to replace, but they're all pole signs, and they would like to replace them with like-kind pole signs, but in a digital fashion. So that's what I, when I allude to, "I'll be back, I'll be back to talk to staff first about those signs." And again, I know that's not this, that's not the reason I'm here right now, but a lot of the PTAs have donated money and raised funds specifically for these signs. So these signs are really coming about as ever from the students' parents, not from the Cattle Parish School Board or the Construction Department.
The monument signs or the ones, the pole signs they want to replace?
Most of them are coming from staff, or not staff, but from student parents, student body, PTAs. But I'm, again, I'm specifically here to talk about just the monument sign of Captain Shreve.
Anything else from the board? I have one question. On the variance, you're asking for the sign to be larger than what the code requires. Why is that?
I am not the architect that actually designed the sign. I'm just representing the school board, making the request. So the sign was actually designed and has been priced, and I think is ready to be built, and is just proportionally a little larger than what the, what the UDC allows.
Okay.
I do think that if you take into consideration how large Captain Shreve is, and how large their site is, and how much frontage they have, and how large their front yard is, even the size that it is now seems tiny in relation to the overall size of the site. I mean, from a proportional standpoint, it still seems small. If you take into consideration a sign like Bird High School has at the corner of King's Highway and Line Avenue, that is a very large, very much out-of-scale sign as far as the UDC goes, but it's appropriate. It looks right, it's proportional, and I would say that is the primary reason for the sign being slightly oversized.
I mean, it is a pretty large expanse of land.
Mm-hmm.
On that frontage.
I mean, I think I submitted an aerial to you guys as part of my original package, and it's a little tiny speck in relation to the overall, that's the size of the sign, but I think I'd submitted an actual, kind of a Photoshop aerial.
Is it in there?
It's in our packet.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet. They have it. Just scroll down from the staff report, and you should be able to see it.
Did you get, did you get the aerial view?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on the board at all? Okay.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone else speaking for case number BAC-18-19? Anyone here to speak in opposition of case number BAC-18-19? There is none, is there a motion from the board?
For the purpose of discussion, I'm going to make a motion that y'all can, I move to approve the variance with the stipulation that the approval, that the pole sign that is currently there be removed.
Okay. Are you looking at a timeframe or?
Well, we can discuss that.
Okay.
Would you get a second?
No.
Have you get a second? Go ahead, here's the motion. It does lack of a second.
Okay. All right.
So you would entertain another?
Right, is there another motion?
Just for informational purposes, if you read the staff report, and you read the information submitted by Mr. Bryan, I think we are all in concurrence with recommending approval for the variance in the sign that's being proposed. I appreciate that, because we're, we have to deal with enforcing sometimes an unpopular ordinance on a daily basis, and we appreciate Mr. Berry's desire to explore the possibilities of how we get to what the intent of the ordinance was, and that was the elimination of pole signs in residential areas, because the ordinance feels that monument signs, which are lower to the ground, are much more attractive and much more conducive to residential areas, more appropriate at schools and churches in residential areas. We appreciate those things, but that's as far as we can go. We recommend that you approve the variance as submitted.
I have a question. Where in relation to the pole sign is this monument sign constructed?
It's, remember, how far it's away? Yeah, you can tell me. The pole sign is like in the center of the campus.
Right, I'm familiar with it.
And the monument sign is proposed at the north corner of the campus, at the entrance driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
No.
It's up.
As a parking area.
As a parking.
Parking area.
Point of order, we really need a motion to continue this discussion.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to continue discussion?
I made my motion.
Okay. Does motion die? Do you have anything else?
Someone needs to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request at hand right now with the sign as a, with the variance.
The application estimated?
Yeah, application estimated.
Okay, go ahead, second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Moss and seconded by Ms. Pearson. Let us cast our votes.
I'd like to discuss, if I can. I mean, I'd just like to have an opportunity to explain my motion earlier. I think that this site has a unique characteristic that does not render that particular pole sign unattractive or a nuisance because of the natural feature of the bayou to the east and the fact that the residential area to the north has a fence and approaches, it doesn't really impact this as it would if it were across the street from facing residential properties. However, given that we do have the new UDC, and I think we're charged with implementing it, I think we need to look hard at these cases and start removing the pole signs, which the UDC is purpose-driven to eliminate, along with any other non-conforming, likely would do with any other non-conforming issues, whether it's a pole sign, or oversized structure, or too many, you know, outbuildings on a lot, adjacent structures, things like that. I'm not particularly against this particular pole sign, but as a gentleman stated, the school board is going to be coming to us a lot. They are, they have a lot of pole signs, and we need to be on the same page with how we deal with pole signs, and this is the time to do it.
Are we able to revisit a motion?
Only if the person who made it, we can have discussion, and then that person who made the motion can amend their, amend or withdraw their motion.
He made the motion.
So that we, Mr. Moss.
I'm not going to withdraw.
So we have to vote, and either we vote it up or vote it down, then we move on.
Okay. Okay, motion carries. Next case, case number BAC-20-19 Snyder Enterprises.
Hello, my name is Alfred Slade, on behalf of Snyder Enterprises. The property is twenty-five twenty-nine East Seventy, Shreveport seven eleven oh-five. It is about a setback variance. What we're trying to do right now is put a covered area over the parking in the very back corner of the property. Where we run into our problem is, it's commercial on both sides, no problem, but the swampland that's behind us, which is part of the Old Sea Vicom Dixon stuff that's flooded all the time right now, for some reason is rated as residential agriculture, which means we would have to move the fence fifteen feet, or the, excuse me, the haunting fifteen foot from the property line, which would put it right in the middle of the parking lot and make it unusable. So what we're requesting is the variance so we can go onto the property line with it.
Okay, anything from the board? All right, thank you, sir. Is anyone else speaking for case number BAC-20-19? Is there anyone speaking in opposition of case number BAC-20-19? Okay, there are nine. Are you motion on the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry and seconded by Mr. Moss. Motion carries. Case number BAP-19, I'm sorry, case number BAP-1-19, Jerry Riles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jerry Riles, forty-seven oh-five, no, thirty-eight forty Fountain Blue Road, Key Just asking for a servitude here on my lot. It's a three-tenths of an acre, and I've had the property twelve years. When I originally purchased it, I was, I bought it to put the, a building on it, mainly to put my tractors and implements, and I got a stick steer, I'm trying to put it all in there, going right behind my house. It's not in fountain blue, it's on the outside of it. The building would be approximately eighty feet behind fountain blue. So I'm just looking for a variance in there to go ahead and get a permit to put it up.
Your lot size is eight tenths of an acre or three tenths?
Eight tenths of an acre.
Okay. I misheard you, I thought you said three tenths.
Eight tenths of one acre. It lacks two tenths of being an acre to get the permit.
Anything from the board?
Yeah, on this Fountain Blue Estates lot, which, which lot would be yours?
Ten, I believe, is what it is. Top left corner.
So you, you maintain that based on this plat, or that this portion of a diagram, that that indicates the entirety of Fountain Blue Estates, and therefore your lot, that is to the?
It's direct behind it.
Right, to the east, is not in that.
That is correct. It's not in fountain blue.
And therefore not subject to the covenants.
That's right. It's not subject to any covenants back there.
Okay. I just want to know where we're going.
What I'm projecting of putting up is just a, a building to put all my equipment in back there.
Okay.
I own two hundred and, approximately two hundred and sixty acres behind it in a partnership, and I use it all the time going back there onto the farm.
That's all I got.
Anyone else? The board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If you will allow me to ask Mr. G., he's been intricately involved in this case, to again, just point out what you actually have before you today reference to this case.
What's in front of you is a variance to the lot size. We use the term bulk and area, that is a, that is a term, it's a term of art that's now used in code, and it's talking about the dimensional standards of the lot. The specific dimensional standard that we're dealing with is the area, the lot area. The lot area now required in the UDC is one acre minimum in the residential, I mean, the rural agricultural district. So since he's an eight tenths of an acre, he's not able to legally, since it's not a legally-planted lot today, in order for Mr. Clark to sign a subdivision plat, he would have to meet the requirements unless a variance is granted to allow a smaller size. So that's what's in front of you right now, is just the determination of whether or not there's a hardship that exists, and whether or not it's appropriate for this particular lot to be a little bit smaller than what the requirement is in order for him to go ahead and plant the lot. That is really the question in front of you today.
That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else speaking? Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking for case number BAP-1-19? Is there anyone speaking in opposition of case number BAP-1-19?
Hello, I'm Nancy Alexander, and I'm actually Mr. Riles' next-door neighbor, but I'm here on.
Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, would you state your address for us, please?
Thirty-eight seventy Fountain Blue Road.
Okay.
I'm here as a member of the Homeowners Association, which voted unanimously to oppose this variance, and I'd like to show you some information that I believe what you've seen is a little misleading, and this will clarify it. This is the property in question. This is Mr. Riles' existing residence. This is my property here, which is almost three acres. This is the property of Daniel Jones, who's the president of our Homeowners Association, and because of an out-of-town commitment, could not be here. So what you see is that this piece of property is ninety-nine percent bordered by the subdivision, and there is a lot more than what you saw in the other. Fountain Blue has about ten streets, all of which about ten homes own them, so there's over a hundred families in that, in the subdivision. It's a, it's larger than your, your interactive map that's posted is a few miles off, because the houses in Fountain Blue are thirty, about thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred square feet. I'll also show you, this is printed from the website in twenty-eleven, and it may not be as clear as I'd like, but here is Mr. Riles' property. This shows you more Fountain Blue, how many people are affected by this. This is Mr. Riles' property. This is the triangle piece in question, and this is my property right here. I'd also like to show you that this is a view from my patio, which I, one of the reasons we purchased this property about ten years ago was because it's wooded, it's pretty, we were protected by covenants, and everyone bought out there with the expectation that they would be covered with those protections. This is a, an actual photo from my, with my, from my patio with an exception, because I learned my, I learned to use Photoshop to do this, and that's what the, the proposed building, he, Mr. Riles wants a variance, so he can put up a building, which he has given some information to that will be forty by eighty feet. So that's thirty-two hundred square feet of a metal building, and when I did this, we were under the impression that he was to build about a thirty by thirty-foot building. Now it's almost twice as large. This would be an eyesore, would interfere with my ability to enjoy my property as well as that of others, so it's not only an eyesore, it's a visual nuisance to the neighborhood. Now here's another one that will show you approximately what it could look like. This is a view from the street. The pole is only about twelve feet from the road. Fountain Blue Road is our main street in the neighborhood, so everybody going and coming is going to pass there, and there again, that was the expectation of a thirty by thirty-foot building. Now we have learned it's to be forty by eighty. Now, Mr. Riles said in his application that the covenants prevented him from adding it to his existing property. I'm a school teacher, so you might figure that out. This is Mr. Riles' existing property. Actually, the Homeowners Association has never been approached to discuss the possibility of annexing that property, and so there would be no objection whatsoever to him simply having this platted as part of his existing property. However, it will cost him more money to build his building because it will be required that we make it compatible with the neighborhood. The issue here is, should he be granted this variance, then he can do pretty much what he wants, and over a hundred families who brought, bought property with the expectation of being protected by covenants will have their property devalued in order for him to save some money. He's also told us that there's no landscaping plan and there's no screening planned, and so again, we see this as potentially really affecting our neighborhood in some very negative ways. Now, the homeowners group, there is a roof requirement of a peaked roof, we would have no objections to it being a little different type roof and to waive that for him. However, we would not. However, we would not want a ten building, and I'm sure any of you, wherever you live, would not want to live in a nice neighborhood that you spent a lot of money to, to build your house and to develop into landscape and to maintain it, only to be passing every day a forty by eighty foot metal building, thirty-five hundred square feet of something that belongs more in a commercial or agricultural area. So as part of the, the neighborhood, and this is only one section, Fountain Blue is a pretty long road, and again, probably about ten streets, I didn't take the time to count them, but over a hundred families that would be affected by this. We've worked with Mr. Riles over at least a five-year period and have addressed this, and again, at no time has he ever asked about simply having his property platted. He mentioned that he had access, in actuality, he does not. This railroad, this is an abandoned ten p railroad here, and it is owned by Dr. Bob Robinson. It is not owned by Mr. Riles. So therefore, he does not have access to this property at all, which is ninety-five percent bound by his property, my property, and Daniel Jones' property.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
You're opposed to the building, the potential building?
I'm opposed to this variance because it will allow him to do whatever he wants. He can raise pigs if he wants. But it's, it's the building that precipitates.
So then your recourse is not with us, because we're not approving a building.
Well, I realize that, but if you approve the variance...
He wants a variance to, to plot, to get a legal plot, plat for his piece of property that he owns.
Well, and we don't want that to occur, because that opens the...
But that's not what we're here to do today. We have, we don't have jurisdiction over your covenants.
Yeah, well, I realize that, but you have jurisdiction over granting, granting this variance, and you would be granting a variance to a piece of property that has no other access.
But he owns the adjacent, that's his access.
Pardon?
You can own two pieces of property and export each other that aren't replatted back together.
Well, he indicated that he did have access, that's why I'm...
Well, he does, it's through his property.
Pardon?
Through his property.
Well, yes, through Fountain Blue. And of course, he enjoys the benefits of the security and...
I guess what I'm trying to say is, your argument may, may be valid, but it's not with us.
Okay, well...
Because all he's asking for is, is to have, is to gain the ability to plat a piece of property that he owns. As anyone else who owns a piece of property might want to do. What he does with it after that, as long as it's by right, according to the UDC, we have no say over that. If you have covenants, that's for you to take up with him in a court of law.
Yes, well, and that will happen, so thank you.
Okay, anyone else speaking in opposition of case number BAP dash one dash one nine? Okay. Okay, there are none. Do I hear a motion?
He needs to have an opportunity to rebut.
I'm sorry. Mr. Riles, would you like to have a rebuttal at this time?
The property itself, I've owned for twelve years, pay taxes on it.
Mr. Riles, could you turn the microphone up a little bit toward you?
Oh, yeah. Everybody's turned down. Okay. Fountain Blue, as a whole, doesn't like anybody to have property outside of Fountain Blue. And the one thing Ms. Alexander failed to tell you is at the end of that road, right there, where it turns to your left, which is Capwir, everybody on that street has property behind them that is not in Fountain Blue. Here's some pictures that I took here, just for her rebuttal. Here's four metal buildings right here in Fountain Blue. And I know you said she didn't, but just to rebut, I wanted to show you that I'm not doing something somebody else hadn't done.
Again, what you do with it after, this is not our concern. That's, that's not before us today.
Okay.
Once you own the piece of property, you can do whatever you want to it, with it, as long as it's by right, unless you want to do something that would require you to come back for another variance.
Okay.
I mean, all that's before us, as Mr. Jean said, all that's before us today is if there is a reason, reason for us to approve or deny the re, the plating of a piece of property that is less than one acre.
Okay.
That's all that's in front of us.
The, the reason that I want the property...
I don't, we don't, that's not, that's irrelevant to us.
Okay.
That's not in our jurisdiction today.
I was just gonna say, I go back to that two hundred and fifty acres I own back there, I won't be able to go back there to it and do more.
I mean, if it abuts your land, you have access to it.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Well, I, I think that he was, you know, this is, again, we don't want to muddy the water too much here. I think he is attempting to gain a, a servitude to the other piece of property from this property, but that's not in front of you.
Exactly.
It's back, the, the issue that's in front of you is whether or not it's appropriate to allow a variance in the lot size.
It's pretty narrow, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir.
Remember, we discussed this in the conference room, that regardless of what else is being proposed or requested, your only issue is whether or not to grant the variance of the size of the lot that's less than an acre, that's required in the law readjustment.
And I, I also go on record in saying, I, I'm not unfeeling for the, for the point of view of the other, of the neighbors and the people in Fountain Blue. I'm just saying, that's not our jurisdiction. And this isn't the place to get redressed for that.
Okay.
I don't want to come off as being callous about it, I'm just trying to be precise about it.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Anyone else from the board want to have a discussion about it? All right. Fair motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
The move by Ms. Pearson and second by Mr. Moss, let us cast our votes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, bring this to the end of our regular ZBA meeting. Is there any old business?
You ready for...
Yes, sir, old business.
I'm sorry, checking some other things. I wanted to advise you that we will have a ZBA meeting next month, the month of May, so if you will prepare for it, it will be the third Wednesday in the month of May.
Fifteenth?
Fifteenth, I don't have the date, but I'm sure that's probably it.
I need you all to come bury gifts, that will be my birthday.
Hey!
Thank you.
In case we don't get a chance to do it next month, happy birthday. That's my gift to you. But the, the reason that the meeting was changed this month was, this is the, the month of the National American Planning Association Conference, that we will be in attend, intend, be attending to bring back valuable information to you in order to continue the process of the orderly growth and development of Shreveport and Cattle Parish. From this point on, we will continue to meet the third Wednesday of each month. You are still one board member short. It appears that you may be a board member short for a while. The parish has recommended a, a board member for, it's a joint appointee, a joint appointment where both the parish and the city has to agree upon the appointment to the board. The parish has selected their appointee, the city has not. The city has not confirmed the appointee of the parish, so we wait on the city. So it is very critical, and we're very thankful that you all attended today, that you attend, because it jeopardizes quarrels if we lose too many persons that are not in attendance of the meeting. Third thing, if you notice, it, it's just, we want you to be much more involved in the decisions that are made. Previous persons in my chair have tried possibly to direct the board. I, I personally feel that it is a much fairer decision, and the forefathers who thought of these boards had in mind that you would have a peer citizen, advice, citizen board to listen to the request of other citizens and make decisions that were not planner-type decisions, but just common sense decisions. From here on, this staff will provide you with all the information necessary for you to make those decisions. We ask that you think that you need more information, that we're not providing you with enough information, or there's anything that we can do to assist you in making those determinations. But I, that personally, for twenty-six years, believe that it is a much fairer opportunity for citizens to come to you as citizens and make their appeals to you. And you've already reviewed the information and had all the information before you, and we will make recommendations. But like I said earlier, we truly appreciate you're beginning to look at, because you're going to hear many more sign variance applications, that you're, and we ask that it's, it's not comfortable. Always, I've been a zoning administrator for twenty-five years, and I was liked by nobody. But it's not comfortable when you have to deny these applications and when you have to put conditions on the applications as, as conditions of approval. But we, the city, city of Shreveport, the citizens of Shreveport and Cattle Parish request your assistance in making courageous and equitable decisions as these applications come before you. I just wanted to share that with you.
Very brief, and, and Mr. Berry, you may want to share with the board what, what I showed you at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Jean brought up a Article sixteen in the, in the UDC, which basically is what gives us our authority.
How do we get to it?
It's on, it's on the, it's library dot unicode dot com.
You can get to it through the main webpage, but...
Right.
If you want me to, I can show it to you, but it's a very short sentence that he's about to read.
Right, if I can find it, I just, action by city council, zoning map amendment, it was special use. It's under, it's under variance to zoning. It's sixteen point four and it's D two, uh, D. The zoning board of appeals may impose such conditions and restrictions upon the variance as may be necess, as may be deemed necessary for the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. And then also, the zoning board may grant a variance that is less than that requested in the submitted application when it has been decided that the applicant is entitled to some relief, but not to the entire relief requested in the variance application. So we could have...
It's not all or nothing.
Yeah, we could have made his sign a little smaller, but still more than the code allows. And we can put stipulations on, on things that, it gives us fairly wide latitude, I think. But that, that's our authority to do what I was making a motion to do earlier.
And that's why we wanted to make sure you understood that you do have that authority. You are a very powerful board. You do have that authority, and it's important that, that you use that authority for the health, safety, and welfare of the city and the parish. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? All right, new business, so I want to officially welcome Mr. Baughlin to the board. Look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Okay, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself real quick?
So, I, I grew up in Shreveport, my family's from here. I spent a number of years traveling all over, everywhere, as far away from here as I could get. Katrina blew me home. I opened a restaurant about eight years ago, and I wanted to be more involved in my city. So here I am, thank y'all for having me. I'm a chef by trade, and a ZBA member. By choice, I guess. Or by invitation, I should, so I've never done anything like this, and, and I'm, I wanted to do something, and this intrigued me, and so I, here I am, and thanks for having me. I'm kind of, I'm... Outside of this room, I am not a shy or quiet person, by any stroke of the imagination. But I've kind of learned, getting my feet wet, so I tend to, to be a little quieter. But once I feel a little more comfortable actually speaking out, I'll, trust me, you'll be like, oh, here he goes again. But thank y'all, and come to Marilyn's place and have... Yeah.
That's what I was waiting for.
Some food.
All right, sounds good, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
All righty.
Mr. Clark had one, just one last thing.
Yes, sir.
We will be gone, leaving pride in, we'll be back with the third zip next week. And if, the office will still be run properly better than it's been run while we're here. But it, in, in my absence, if you need anything, please feel free to contact Adam Bailey. He will be there, and he can answer any questions that you may have.
Where, yeah, where is it? Where is the conference? Where, where y'all traveling to?
San Francisco.
Oh, right on, yeah.
I just asked that you guys conduct yourself in a manner becoming of Shreveport officials.
No, don't do that, do better.
Do better.
In the words of my mother, don't let your name beat you back.
All right, any, anything from the board at this time? I do want to point out that this Saturday is the Great American Cleanup. And if you are part of a neighborhood association that participates, or a group that participates, please get out and make America beautiful again. All right, nothing else? Meeting adjourned.
Do you not have a gavel, Mr. Chair?
I don't, I, I look for it, I don't know where it is.
We almost didn't have a meeting.
Yeah, I thought I'd get back home, like, you know what?
Looks like she have a gavel at the next meeting. I thought I heard you do this at the beginning of the meeting.